Good afternoon and thank you all for being here with us. This is Tuesday, as you know, September the 5th, 2023, at 3:30 and you're at the Putnam County School District Board Meeting. We are going to go ahead and get started and again, we thank you for being here, your concern for our district. At this time, we will have our pledge of allegiance led by Mrs. Linda Wagner and the invocation by Mr. David Buckles. Stand those that can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Buckles?
Father, we give thanks today for all the blessings that we have and all the things that we have going on that are benefiting the lives of our young people in Putnam County. We need all the help we can get, Father, and we call on you to watch over our employees and parents and everyone as they go about their daily business and help those on the board and in the system make decisions that are in the best interest of our kids and their future lives each and every day, Father. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Mrs. Wagner and Mr. Buckles. At this time, do we have any public comments? We don't have any, okay, so we're ready. At this time, we'll start with Mr. Phil Leary for our consent agenda.
Chairman, I pulled G1 and G4, just for questioning.
G1.
And then...
G4.
And then H13.
H13, okay. And we are automatically pulling, if you're looking at the agenda, we have pulled item G3 and G5. We have pulled those, all right? Mrs. Wagner?
I don't have anything to pull, thank you.
All right, thank you ma'am. Mr. Buckles?
Question, did Phil pull H4?
No, sir. He pulled G4.
G4.
So you want H?
No, 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 I was curious, I thought there was somebody...
He pulled H13.
H13.
Yes, he did.
Okay, I have...
You want G4 or H13?
I came in early and met with staff and I feel pretty good.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, Mrs. Pickens?
I have nothing to pull.
All righty, and I have nothing to pull, so can we get a motion to accept?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus G1, G4. I will say, did you say H13?
H13, yes, sir.
And that's it?
Yes, sir.
G3 and G5.
G3 and G5, yeah, we took those off the board as well.
All right, those are already on...
Yes.
But I'll say, and G3 and G5.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second.
It's been motioned by Mr. David Buckles that we accept the consent agenda minus items G1, G3, G4, G5, and H13, and it was second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. Any further discussion?
I do have a question, are those, are we pulling those or are they removed?
They, they're removed, okay.
So then we needed a different motion, I would say, because he included 3 and 5 and those are removed, not pulled.
And we're not going to discuss.
That's why I kind of asked like I did, but Madam Chair, I'll...
But I put "pulled" there and I should have written "removed."
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we accept that G3 and G5, excuse me, what were the ones again?
1, 4, and H13 is what we're pulling.
Well, the ones that were removed, are they already removed?
Yes, sir, we removed them.
I'll resend my motion, let somebody else make a more clarified motion.
Okay, all right.
Confused. I know Susan came in and we pulled two of the items, so I don't know how to discern between...
And we clarified the use of "pulled" and "removed."
Well, I thought that would have covered it, but I didn't know if we needed a separate motion.
Madam, Madam Attorney?
Well, since...
Should it be removed or pulled?
I believe "removed" would be the appropriate word.
Okay, "removed" would be the appropriate word, in that way, we don't have to discuss it when Mr. Leary has the person to come up and discuss 1, 4, and H13.
Okay.
So Mr. Buckles has rescinded his motion because it included 3 and 5.
Yeah, somebody else can make a clarifying motion.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus G1, G4, and H13.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept the consent agenda with the exception of items G1, G4, and H13, and it was second by Mrs. Linda Wagner. All right, thank you, Mrs. Pickens, for that question when you had it, all right? Any further discussion? All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by I. I oppose this, here are none, our motion carries. We are now ready for G1.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Um, two weeks ago, at our last board meeting, we approved the request for the Superintendent and the Executive Director of Leadership Development to attend this conference, the CEO conference, and I was just curious as to what it was, you know, about, so when I saw we had another request for it and the fact that I've been somewhat remiss in looking in more detail of these out-of-state trips and our approval of them and the fact that I don't remember any discussion, at least in the 10 months I've been on, about any of them, so I decided to look into this one and one door led to another one. So honestly, the way I look at this is a CEO conference and what it's intended for, and it says right here, and I emailed this to y'all today, but you obviously didn't have a chance to look at it, is it's for Superintendents, Communications Directors, or Public Relations Directors. The Executive Director of Leadership Development nor the Community Relations Director, based on their job titles, don't have any of this experience or this conference is completely unrelated. And let me tell you what the cost is. So it's a $700 per person registration, a flight, which the last flight I took to Memphis was about $650, hotels for three nights, and then meals excluding the meals that are paid for in the registration. And that got me to, you know, looking at some other things, which I'll bring up under my discussion at the end and not because it is related to this, but indirectly. And so I think that, you know, when we expend these kind of monies for trips, travel trips, especially out-of-state, that we should have attached to the agenda not only what the conference is, what the benefit to the district versus the cost is, and then what, you know, how is that directly related to us educating kids? So I just, I couldn't put it all together, and again, I've been working on this for a couple of days with a whole host of other things that I think we probably should look at, but based on that, you know, I'm gonna move that we deny item G1 and then I'll have another motion after that.
Madam Chair, can I respond to that when you get a minute?
I was gonna say, I looked at it because I thought it was the same one and I was saying, we already approved this one, but the other one is for Mrs. McDaniel, I think it is, for Sarah Jean and Superintendent, and so I said, oh, okay, the three are going to represent us and that was, you know, that was that for me, but I did look into it, but not as deep as you have gone down into it. Anyone else?
Do we have a second?
Well, we're discussing, all right?
I'll second it for discussion only at this point because I...
All right, well, hold it then, you've seconded.
I'll just hold it.
All right, you've seconded. All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Phil Leary that we deny item G1 and it was second by Mr. David Buckles. Now, we are ready for discussion, all right?
Yeah, and I just want to speak to that. I'm attending that conference too, and this is the company's apogee, and I want to make sure, we clarify, this is not only for CEOs, this is for additional staff, which you mentioned, but I want to talk about what the focus of this conference is, which really lines up what we do in our strategic plan and all the communication we have through rooms, which we've just implemented, but let me just, the three parts of this conference, engage in learning around improved school communications with internal and external stakeholders in our community. Number two, improve school and district culture with leadership support for an organization. And number three, increase effective methods of promoting and marketing our schools to increase community trust and improve enrollment. And I'll tell you what, the, we talk about trust, us being transparent and really communicating with our community, especially with this new item that we're using called rooms, has really ramped up our communication with parents tremendously, with teachers, so I can't stress enough how much this aligns to our strategic plan, and again, the three people that are going are going for specific reasons. And the individual here, Ashley McCool, is our Director of Community Relations, and it lines up exactly what she does. She was actually the administrator over the rooms program and does all of our communication, and Apogee has become a tremendous partner with this, so we're going to, you know, learn more about this and also to collaborate with other districts on their communication program. So I just want to kind of get some reasons for this conference.
Yes, and I'll go ahead, Mr. Buckles.
I briefly spoke with staff earlier this morning, I had a conference or an occasion to have a conversation with Ashley and different staff members and, you know, this new app or whatever it is, if you're talking about, Rick, I know that it's easier for people in schools to use what they've been doing, their regular Facebook and whatever they want to use to send information out, but, you know, this is something we're gonna have to look more closely at. I know in past years, it was not uncommon to, for Superintendent to send staff members in their place to attend certain things on behalf of the district and bring back information. I know even recruiting, we would send district administrators to different universities to recruit potential teachers, so it's not, and I know that even to put money in the district travel budget doesn't mean you're gonna spend it, you know, and so that's, that's a tool that our Finance Director uses in all budgets, you know, from time to time when it comes to dealing with the state of Florida, so I, I don't have a real burning desire that they not go, but I do think that this tool that they've got, this, what'd you call it again?
Apogee, rooms.
Rooms, that's, that's the one, it's gonna, there's gonna be some headbutting in the schools to get through this situation because they're not wanting to have to go through and learn the new apps and the things that come with it, but the potential good, to me, outweighs, outweighs the negative, but that's just me, but anybody else can discuss how you want.
All right, and now, I, I concur about in the future adding specifics as to what you just outlined, Mr. Superintendent, the, the goals, what it is we get, the return on our investment in the future, making that a part of the attachment when the requests come, so in the future, I would like to see that.
So are you asking?
That's a point.
Are you asking that we provide some new procedure as far as submitting items for travel as to include, I just want to make sure, I'm hearing this from the board members and because this is additional information we want that you're asking us to provide?
Out-of-state, out-of-state, when, when it's...
Well, even, even in, even in...
It takes away this portion.
Even in-state, the Superintendent cannot be at all places at all times and he's gonna send staff, not that I like it, but he's gonna have to send staff to Orlando, to Tampa, to Miami, and, you know, because he would never be here if he had to attend all these things, and you don't always have to. I know that even the Florida School Board Association, some years ago, some districts dropped out of it and opted into a more cost-effective way of doing things, and I don't know if they're still out of it or not, but, you know, there are a lot of ways if you want to workshop and look at how money is budgeted and how it is put in accounts and then the language that would go, which any language we have has already been, has already been approved by NEOLA, so, you know, anything different, if we were to come up with something or a different guideline, we would have to, we'd need to workshop it at some point with somebody smarter than me trying to figure out.
Chair, can I get some clarification if you're requesting?
Before we do that, can I just offer my rebuttal?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, and then, because I do think he has, that is an important thing, that we do need additional information, at least I do, you know, making decisions like this. So if you look at each of the job descriptions for the two people that are attending, that want to attend, other than the Superintendent, it doesn't match up with what's in the conference, and that's what really brought my attention. And in fact, a public relations director or communications director, in my eyes, is somebody that has a degree in communications or public relations or public information and has experience and has done that and background and is not an educator. Well, that's not what we have, and so I understand what the Superintendent's saying, but, and if it's apples to apples, that'd be great, but this is apples and oranges, and maybe we need, you know, to look at our job descriptions for our people and reevaluate them, and certainly, we need to look at the qualifications because, you know, we need to be hiring professionals in these important positions like public information and officer, and I'll give you an example, the sheriff's public information officer, Allison Porter's Merritt, is a public information person, has a degree in communications and she's done a phenomenal job with the sheriff and his public relations, and so all I'm saying is that we're gonna spend a lot of money, and we do spend a lot of money, in fact, this year's budget request for the 2324 budget year for travel, for travel now, this for the district.
Now, this is...
Right. $239,000, almost a quarter of a million dollars. That is a lot of money for a, for a school system that's had a reduction in students over the last 10 years, has closed schools and consolidated, and so, you know, these are the kind of things that we should be looking at from a budget standpoint to assure that we're getting the most bang for our buck with what we're doing. So with that, I agree, and I also agree, we probably need to workshop this.
Phil makes a, he makes a point, our job is oversight of, you know, budgeting, but also the Superintendent's job, in most every job description I've seen in over my years as an administrator, as a Superintendent or Board Member, would read and other duties as assigned by the Superintendent. So it doesn't necessarily mean, and Carol may could research that, but, I mean, that's something we really need to workshop because if a Superintendent, to me, under Florida law, has the authority to assign a task to someone else, it doesn't make it, it doesn't make it sound right according to the language that they've got to have written in the job description, but other duties as assigned has always been a catch-all for any administrators, and I don't know, I haven't pulled up Florida statutes and tried to look at it right now, but Carol, you might look through that and get back with the staff, but...
Mrs. Pickens?
I just want to say that Apogee is a lot more than just rooms, correct?
Yeah, it is.
I mean, in that part of the branding, in that part of communication...
Oh, communication, yeah.
Yeah, it, I mean, they, our website, correct? Okay.
Our website, they do all of our online messaging, the O B T, and now the two-way communication.
I'm gonna ask you, Mrs. McCool, if you will come up here, please.
Can I say something before she comes up?
Okay.
Because this is under my area of responsibility, and a lot of these type things could be cleared up, in my opinion, if I'm reached out to ahead of time, but when it came to this particular conference, I started out just by looking at, I went to the website and I looked at the conference itself, and next to Superintendent, where, you know, you click on the who should come, right next to Superintendent was the Director of Communications. Now, this board item is about whether or not Ms. McCool should attend this conference. If we're gonna talk about her job description, and I mean, that was brought up, but as of right now, she is the Director of Communications and that's the target audience for this particular conference. I mean, it's right there on the website. Ashley, I'll let you come up and, you know, go on the front.
Yeah, first of all, would just love to say to Mr. Leary that I would have loved to sit down with you and talk to you about what I do. I know you have visited other departments in the district and done that, and I haven't had the opportunity to do that with you yet, but I would love to. Apogee does power our website, they are responsible, which was in place a year before I took this position, but they are responsible for all of the brand refresh that we did in the district during the strategic plan, they have done new logos for all of our schools, and they have helped us with all of our communication tools, so we save quite a bit of money by using a program called Alerts, which is how each of you get a text, like for the hurricanes, so they do all of that and that happens from my computer, so I manage all of that, I do all the training for all the schools, for all of these messaging tools. This particular conference is an opportunity to collaborate with other districts who are doing the same work we're doing. Since Dr. Surrance, he has been in office, he has put it on us to be professionals in our own positions. I am qualified for the position which I hold, I will defend that, and I would love to sit down and chat with you about that further. If you read the job description, I have all the qualifications. There are folks at the NSPR Conference that I attend this summer, and that's my third one, there are people who have been teachers who oversee communications, there are journalists, there are people who have PR degrees, communication degrees, there are attorneys who oversee communications. So there isn't like a law that says an organization has to have a person who does this or that. Allison's amazing, she actually just left this building, we met for an hour together because we do work together as a community of PIOs. My assistant, Felicia Kayhan, who has the background in communications, also sits in those meetings and we collaborate. So if I'm being completely honest, I feel quite targeted that no one bothered before this meeting to ask what I do, what we do here as a district, and how far we've come with that tool. We have sent out close to 22,000 invitations to families to join rooms. I am the only person who sits in my office every day and answers hundreds of emails to get these families connected, and I take my job very seriously. So whether or not you decide to allow me to go on this trip does not change my goal for this position in representing this district in a very professional way and ensuring that we are building trust with our community, which is my goal since being placed in this position. Thank you.
Do you have a question for? Did you? I thought somebody called her up, I just wanted to make sure.
No, I called her up because it was better for her to be up, to explain, no, sir.
Sandy, I...
She did what I needed her to do, to share what, what happens, what she does.
Phil's brought out a good point, I mean, we need to do a better job of, I think we've taken it for granted because many of us have been in this so long that we feel good about the recommendations that come to us, but I've had times when I didn't feel good about recommendations over the years that came to me, and, but I know as I watched Thomas come up, he's an Associate Superintendent, am I correct?
Yes.
That means he has the power to act in the place of Superintendent if Superintendent's not here, so it's always not written in their job description, but when a Superintendent follows the, as a principal would like to take a teacher out of field and put them in a different position, you can do stuff like that even though the policy says you can't, you've got other duties as assigned, and I don't know if it's still written in Florida statute or if it's in board policy, but if we don't have this spelled out in board policy, then that's where we need a workshop to look at our language, to make sure that we don't get somebody in here that would, would do things and not do it the right way, and...
Okay.
And Madam, you got it?
I just have a small comment, without getting into the depths of some of this conversation, I do agree with your point that, you know, the more backup we have, the more information we have about these, and I think we are, we see people going to different conferences, different groups going to functions, FFA, and these different travels, and they seem to make sense on their face and they tend to get, they tend to get approved, just as a matter of course, but I think especially on ones we're unsure of, maybe on some of these conferences, it never hurts for us to have a little bit more information so that we don't have to go digging as much, like, well, what is this conference really about? And I've, but I've seen some that come with the letter requesting the funding and they'll have an attached sheet that's maybe a flyer for the function, and that kind of tells us a little bit more, and I am a little more satisfied when I get that backup information, so I don't know if that's something we need to change a policy on or just request it a little bit more.
And it's an easy fix for them to attach that to it, so, so out of the conversation, we hear workshop, which they're good because it will thoroughly explain, and I just appreciate what I gained from Ashley's conversation as to what all this is entailing, because I got a rooms invite and I'm thinking, what in the world, and it did have my nephew's name on it, because Monday through Friday, he is at my residence, and I'm thinking, and I've been hitting delete, Ashley, so now I will pick it up and I will, you know, respond and get in there, so, so it is great. It is great, and we walk to know, and...
Let me just address a couple of things, I'm not targeting anybody, I'm doing my job as a board member. I did go to the Superintendent in February or March of this year and express some concerns about public information and the fact that in both positions I held previously, I had public information officers, and that I thought that this, this job was targeted more towards an education, that's fine, if that's what the board wants and that's what, you know, the administration wants, I just think it's a much bigger position than maybe what it was, and so, and then the second thing is, is that yesterday was holiday, I was busy, I had two client crises today, I don't always have time to call, you know, and I do think, I want to hear what you've got to say, and I've got the consensus that you all agree this is a good thing, so I withdraw my motion.
Okay, all right.
So do I need to withdraw in a second?
Yes.
I'll withdraw in a second, but there is more to this than meets the eye, that we need to, we need to do a better job of educating ourselves, that's why I try to come in and see staff early, so...
All right.
Madam Chair, can I ask for clarification?
Yes.
Do you want to workshop this? Do you want us to come back with a procedure? Because we're talking about any, I'm hearing you talking about any travel requests that you like additional information?
Out-of-state, out-of-state.
Specifically.
Specifically. The others, you go in Orlando, you go, you get the information, Tallahassee, you go, you get the information, St. John's, wherever you're going and getting information that will better our district and better what you all do, the job you do for us, that will be fine, but just, I trust your wisdom, look at where it is and say, hey, I'm gonna get the board a little more on it, like an attachment, a flyer, like, like we've seen, we've seen all of that, so that's all we're asking. The workshop then, what I hear you and Mr. Buckles referring to would be the budgeted piece of it, is that, am I right?
Well, if it, if it applies to, to this, it would apply to other things as well, I mean, we need a little clarification on, I mean, I'm of the opinion, the Superintendent, unless we have good cause or just cause to pull one of the people from either a job position or, or description, you know, he can litigate with us over that, that is his responsibility in our Florida law, but just for clarification, I just, I can understand how the public perception might be, well, if you're sending two or three people or five or 10 people to a conference, that they may not understand, but I can remember the district in past years, it wasn't me, but sending 25 and 30 people to Baltimore, Maryland, and, you know, to be trained in certain things, so it's, you know, it doesn't happen every day, but it happens enough, it, it is substantial, travel does take out a lot of the budget and it's something that... Travel does take out a lot of the budget, and it's something that we have to continue to do a better job and rely on our Finance Director to keep us informed. If we get to a certain point, we need to get straight down.
So, the Superintendent has asked for clarification on what do we want? All right, he understands what we want, what we're asking for as for, as the trips themselves, specific details, pamphlets, et cetera, et cetera. But he's now asked clarification on the workshop. Do you want it? And if we say yes, what do we want that workshop to deal with? That's, am I correct?
Yeah, what you were asking. Yeah, what's that?
Is that, you want clarification?
A little clarification on future items out of, I'm hearing you say out of state travel. Do you want us to attach to the documentation what the work, what the, what it's about, details, basically a brochure or whatever will provide you more information about?
That that you read to me after you hit those bullets?
Yeah.
That suffice? I mean, I was with it, but, you know, something that tells that will just kind of spell out...
Even when they come back from a training, they make a presentation to the Board and let us know what they've been through. I mean, that's probably going to happen anyway, but that's not uncommon to have a Board presentation based on what new information they've learned and what the new device they're trying to school everyone in to channel the information in the correct fashion.
Well, when we first, Apogee, we've had a workshop or we've had a presentation, at least one or two, I'm sure. But I know one because I was completely familiar with the whole, everything that they were doing for us. So, to me, it was a no-brainer because they're working for us every single day, so...
And I can recall Abbott, when they went, they came back and did a presentation. I don't know if you remember. I think Jane got to go along with them, and they actually came back to the Board and presented. And it was costly, but what they brought back and what our students gained from it, you know, offset any, any cost.
So, Madam Chair, just for a point of clarification.
I hear you keep asking. I'm checking. That's where I'm working.
And we have a three Assistant Superintendents in here that will be in charge of that.
Yes.
So, I want to make sure I make it very clear. Future out of state travel, you want some type of brochure attached or something describing what the conference is about, who's supposed to attend?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That would be nice. That's not unheard of. I've seen that before.
I just want to make sure I'm hearing you clearly.
And what the benefit of us spending thousands of dollars for travel is to the district. Now, I think that Superintendent did a good job in explaining it. I still disagree that the job descriptions don't match up to this, but that's another, we'll deal with that another day. But I do think it's important that we, you know, from a fiduciary standpoint, that we feel confident that the money is being spent, that there's a benefit to the district and that, you know, it directly relates back to educating kids. And I mean, I'm just...
Well, and you can actually, if I may, go back and all this connects with our strategic plan as well. I mean, all these line up, we have a whole section on Communications and Community. You know, all these connect to our, what plan you have, you have actually approved.
And let me just ask, have we had one done since you joined the Board where they actually walked us through the entire strategic plan? We were in groups, and then maybe the Superintendent would get that and do that again?
Well, Madam Chair, just when we do the State of the District presentation, Ashley...
That's October 18.
Okay.
We'll go through this strategic plan.
Right.
Okay, all right.
And we've been following.
Right, right. And then you, all of us will see the connection as to what it's doing for us. All right, now, let me, for clarification, it's been a great discussion, I don't, in my mind, but in regards to, you said you withdrew...
I withdrew my motion.
Your motion.
Correct.
All right. So, now, we need you to make...
I withdraw my second.
And the second has been withdrawn, and so you were the one that pulled it, pulled G1? So, are you ready now to? Yes, all right, move approval. Do I get a second?
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Phil Leary moved approval on Item G1, Out of State Travel, Apogee School CEO Conference, and it was second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. Any further discussion? Are we ready to vote? All right, all in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers? Hearing none, our motion carries. Okay, G4.
Madam Chairman, I just had a question on this, that they're taking the, they take stock in children or students, I guess, to visit Daytona State College, and I was just curious, is there something special about Daytona State College or in comparison to St. John's, or what exactly is that, does that mean?
I think I maybe can, I think they alternate. Like, I think they went to St. John's last year.
So, they go to more than one during the school year?
I know they went to St. John's or the University of Florida and St. John's last year, maybe, so maybe they do a fall and a spring, but...
And I didn't, I didn't pick apart that part of it. The key things for me was that it's a planning day. They're requesting to use our buses and our bus drivers, and they're paying for it. So, I mean, it pretty much was a no-brainer. I mean, not only the salaries and the cost of the buses, you know, there's people volunteering and actually work, so I didn't pick apart, you know, the value of Daytona State College versus St. John's.
Well, I just was curious if there was something special about Daytona State College that I didn't know, so anyway.
I do remember at the take stock banquet last week, she did say they have dorms there, and the kids like to see college dorms and stuff.
Okay. Move approval.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved that we accept Item G4, the additional days, and second by Mrs. Linda Wagner, or was it Holly?
It's kind of the same time.
All right, the same time, so we'll record Mrs. Linda Wagner. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, are we ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers? We hear none, our motion carries. Okay, H13?
I think that's me, too.
Is there anyone here to speak on Item H13?
Yes, ma'am, we have.
Comprehensive evidence-based reading.
I was, you know, this was a tremendous amount of information, and I assume there was, because it was adopted last school year.
Yes.
And that, you know, I did, Ms. Wagner and I didn't have the opportunity to see the presentation. I mean, it looks outstanding, but it is way over my head as far from an educational standpoint. So, I just, you know, it looks phenomenal. I just need, could you just help me a little bit clarification?
Sure, absolutely, because I feel like I live my life by this plan. Oh, sorry. Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. Yes, I'm Jenna Zula. I'm the Director of Teaching and Learning in Putnam County. And so, this plan really guides so many of the decisions that we make in our district, and it probably is new to several because the process changed this past year. In years past, we submitted it to Just Read Florida on behalf of the district, and the state really approved the plan. This last year, they made a move to now you have to have two approvals for the plan, one within district, and then we send it up to the state, and then the state gives it its final approval. So, we took it through both of those steps last year, and both were approved with the understanding that at any point, if we wanted to add or revise, which they very much encourage you to do as you discover issues with the plan, if you have student needs that come up that maybe you didn't plan for, even though I am with you, they ask for so much in this plan. They really do nudge you and give you a template to help you think through so much that you maybe wouldn't think through normally. So, they are very proactive in that approach, but even with that, we all know when you get kids in front of you, sometimes you realize another need is there that you didn't plan for. And so, they give you lots of opportunities throughout the year and encourage you that if you find another need, to please go ahead and make a revision. So, I anticipate this to be our first revision. I don't know if we'll need more, but I hope that you're open to it because I very much am as our teachers encounter real-life kids in their classes, and they have needs. I like to be very responsive.
So, would the revisions occur as they come up, I mean, during the year or just annually?
Yes, no, as they come up. So, this is the first time that I realized very quickly I needed to do a revision early because when we took this to the Board at the end of last year, I think it was mid-May or something like that, right after that, we had an admin meeting where we discussed in detail iReady Diagnostic and adding it in not just for K through three, but also for four through six. It was a plan we already had in place anyway. So, this is just basically a formalization of that plan because one of the points our administrators made is if we're already going to be giving this as our diagnostic because it helps put kids on a path on the product, why not be able to use that formally for our K-12 reading plan? It made perfect sense to me, and because they were all in consensus, I bring that one to you today, and you'll see that that is the main one. In addition to that, today, we're asking to add the Lexia PowerUp Intervention. It's a new intervention to me, but I'm very excited. We're going to get to do a pilot of sorts, if you approve this, with our virtual school students. We're always looking for ways to meet the needs of kids online as well. And so, because we provide a plan for them as well, we decided to write and add that one in. That one actually has a very strong evidence base based on ESSA, so we're excited to learn more about that through our virtual schools use, and it may end up being something that looks like a really good fit for in-person school as well. I don't know yet, but we're excited to propose that to you all as a possible addition for Tier Two and Tier Three for those students receiving online education in our district.
And I was going to ask, I have my finger on it. I'm from the old school. What's the difference in a walkthrough and a trend walk? I saw that, and I'm saying, I've been out of it, now I'm in.
So many words for so many things, right?
But I'm excited because it took me back to when you all would do the plan that wasn't you in that position then, but how we would, but it wasn't as detailed as this. I'm telling you, you have gotten down to the nitty-gritty, and it's going to, our children are going to benefit. But back to my original.
Yes. So, our Trend Walk Tool is a new tool for PCSD. It's really for, centered around coaching and instructional improvement. It's not evaluative in any way. If you have been attending any of the FDOE work around literacy, you've probably heard them talk about literacy practice profiles. They have created those for K through five, six through eight, and nine through 12. And what we have attempted to do, so it's not a required document the district uses, that a district must use, but there are some incredible things in that tool to help really, we felt like, move us to the next step in our instruction. So, we have been intentionally embedding an element or two each year into the PCSD Trend Walk Tool so that we, too, are focusing on what the state is saying quality literacy instruction really looks like. But instead of just saying to teachers, we've got this tool, we're going to use it, we take one element at a time, we teach the teachers that element through our learning community models that I've talked to you all about in the past, where we pull them together in core subjects three times a year so that they get professional learning, not just with us, but with the most important people, those that do the exact same thing as them throughout the district. So, it's a chance for every school to come together in one place, teachers who do the same thing, teach the same subjects, and really share best practices and ideas. Through those communities, we've rolled out, last year, we rolled out explicit instruction, which was one of the state's elements, that they say that in a best-case scenario in a classroom focused on literacy, you should see that piece. This year, we're focusing on scaffolding and then corrective feedback. And then I imagine as time goes on and we pinpoint needs and elements that match our needs, we'll look at embedding other ones. But it's been, I found it a really nice way not to be so overwhelming for folks and really give them one bite at a time to learn, perfect, get used to, planning for, and then layering on another element.
So, it's a live document.
It is.
It's moving, changing, and fly kids.
That's right. That's right. And it's a great way to get a sense of what does literacy instruction look like at a glance without connecting a single teacher's name to it. This is really about trending instructional practices across your school site so that our leaders and our coaches and everybody involved can look at and say, okay, what's the next step that's needed to get our kids to the next step along the continuum? So, it's just another way to help really be focused and improve instruction.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam. Excellent explanation, and Madam Chairman, I'll move H13 for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, it's been motion by Mr. Leary that we approve Item H13 and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. Any further discussion? Just a thorough explanation as he stated, just so much enthusiasm, so you can tell, you believe in it, you feel it, and we appreciate that. So, we're ready to vote. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposers? Hearing none. All righty. We do not have any emergency items, so we, and we have no unfinished business and no new business. So, at this time, we will move into our reports from the Board members, the Attorney, and the Superintendent. We'll start with you, Mrs. Pickens.
Okay. First, I would just like to really thank the district for working with the county, making sure that all of our shelters were open last week, and a special thanks to those people that man the shelters and actually, you know, are away from their home when, you know, in the event that a storm does happen, you know, we just had bad weather, but in the event, it's always better to be proactive, I believe, than reactive. I want to compliment on communication during the storm and preparation for that, for the storm. I got a text, I got emails and phone calls, and so I was very appreciative of that. I just wanted to mention in the consent agenda, we approved travel, trips for FFA, volleyball, and graduation dates. And I, I just want to say that what an opportunity for our students to get out and meet other students with similar interests and also to represent Putnam County, which I feel very confident that all of them will do, whether it's through sportsmanship or just being, you know, in different groups in the FFA and sharing all the things they've learned and other high school students have learned. And finally, I would like to say congratulations to last year's graduate from Crescent City Junior/Senior High School, Jesus Cruz. He played soccer at Crescent City. He was named Florida's Male Athlete of the Year, and I voted many times online for him, only that was allowable. And he is now continuing his education and his soccer career at Trinity Baptist College. So, just a big shout out to Jesus. He's got great sisters that I coached and great family. So, and that's all I have.
Vote Jesus. Thank you, Mrs. Pickens. Mr. Buckles?
I voted for Jesus as well, so. Anyway, I had a couple of things. Safety, I haven't heard any negatives about the winding at the football games, really. I was very pleased with that. I mean, this is a sign of the times. I know we had a shooting in America at a football game the other night in Oklahoma, maybe the same night. You know, we're continually looking for ways to do better, and even right down to the facilities that we're trying to build in this process, the way the windows and the hallways, everything about them, the facilities that are being proposed and modeled, has a lot to do with safety. And this Board has continually asked the Superintendent to bring us ideas on safety. And I commend him for that, and I know now look at part of his travels that he's had to take, had to do with showing people about the Guardian Program in other districts and states. But that's kind of taking root in America as well. I see that getting bigger throughout our schools, throughout America, and I'm proud to be on the forefront, and I look forward to this, these cameras that we're investing in, having ways to find portable opportunities to move them into graduation ceremonies or football games as well in the future. And I've already had that talk with Superintendent, so I feel he'll continue to let us know what he needs, when he needs it, and Rick, I appreciate that. Budgeting is never, I mean, that's what we do, that's part of our job. Phil's right to look at what we do. It is, I'm kind of interested, and Carol, if you get a chance, just give us an idea on, I would think the Superintendent has the authority to assign anyone on his staff to attend, but I'm just curious. I just, that's something I would like to know. To my recollection, if he designates one of his Assistant Superintendents or staff members to... to be in charge of something, then they are in charge of it. But, I mean, legally, it might be beneficial to know more about that so we don't get ourselves in a pickle. And I'm glad Phil brought that up so we can, we can look at it. Because I know that traditionally, we budget, and Rhonda's done a phenomenal job over the years of, and other finance directors prior to Rhonda, on putting money in budgets because you don't know when the state's going to come in and say, freeze your budgets, and, you know, we've got it scattered out and, you know, we may need to roll it back to the state, you can't spend it. So we've been very fortunate and blessed, and I hope we're able to continue to meet financial needs for our employees. Athletics, that blends into the stuff we've got going on now. I just, people, people just need to understand that sometimes the administrators and principals and school safety officers have access to information in the community that we don't distribute to the public. And, I mean, sometimes it comes out in the news article a day or two later, but if we get a rumbling or a rumor, then, you know, it's all, all hands on deck, let's look out and let's take precautions. And sometimes you get people to criticize you for that, and sometimes you have people that are thankful. But it's, it's a serious business. It's, it's hard to, you know, you can't just flippantly say we're, you know, we're not doing anything because we've got people right now that are following up on leads on what they may have heard, you know, in our schools throughout Putnam County. And not just Putnam County, it'd be throughout the state of Florida and America in general in our schools. So, and my last comment was, was teaching and learning. You know, that's what we're here for. Everything else, we're just here to facilitate teaching and learning. And that boils down to safety, that boils down to, you know, feeding, transporting, cleaning the school, everything we do, it focuses around teaching and learning. And just about the time we get really good at doing something, the state will come in, and it's for political reasons, they'll raise the bar and declare schools to be failing or not meeting the mark. And it'll be the same schools with the same population again. It doesn't mean that I'm not for trying to do better, but we've got to continue to send our people that are in charge of teaching and learning to keep up with the latest information and how it's going to impact us in the future so we don't get bumped back to the bottom of the heap. And, and I know that's a very, that's a very broad statement, but when you get right down to it, it's very focused at the same time because it is about teaching and learning, it's about these kids learning to read at the earliest possible levels, it's about the ones that lost a year or two during the pandemic, having to go online and mask. But Jennifer, I was very pleased to hear your presentation, and I look forward to you giving us some feedback. And that's, I'll be quiet.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles.
Volleyball games later on.
Mrs. Wagner.
Well, I did, I just want to say I do appreciate the depth of review that Mr. Leary has been exercising. I think the discussion today was very beneficial. And while sometimes things get a little uncomfortable, I think it, overall, it benefits everyone to look a little more closely at some of these items when they, it's a large amount of money, and we have a big budget, and we do need to be looking at at least some of these items a little more closely. And, and perhaps that, that in-depth review changes nothing because we're all supportive of what we're, we're spending, but at least we are making more knowledgeable decisions on that. I also received the text messages and phone calls and was very, very happy about that because there's a lot of folks that really need that communication. And I would just say, Putnam County, you know, we're kind of in an area that doesn't generally get hit extremely hard, being kind of in the middle of the state. My hometown of Madison is the same way. They rarely ever get hit by a hurricane. Well, I'll tell you right now, they got hit. I've had my mother staying with me for almost a week, and they finally got power restored to most of Madison as of yesterday, but not all. And we just have to make sure, safety's always a factor with our schools, but even with our, you know, communicating with our emergency response, local teams, that, that we get the information to the parents and the students to keep them safe during these types of crises. I've, I'm friends on Facebook with a couple of the Madison School Board members, and they've been posting some great information about what's going on and what the community is doing and when people are coming in. And, you know, I really hope that we never have to deal with the damage that some of those areas, much less Steen Hatchie and Keaton Beach, have suffered. But I think it's wonderful that we have the systems in place to give us the information we need. People know about the shelters and can get out of the low-lying areas and mobile homes when it's necessary. So I was really, just really happy to see that going on.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Wagner. Mr. Leary?
The, I had the opportunity to attend the football game, Palacahay's game, last Friday night, great game. And I will tell you, the winding was very professionally done. The staff and all law enforcement were really polite and nice. There was not one issue, I mean, I didn't see, and I walked around the stadium quite a bit.
It was very, very well done, and I know people felt very secure after going through that process. So, I mean, it's just a sign of the times and something we're going to probably have to get used to. Also want to, you know, have a big shout out to the maintenance staff that traveled over to Taylor County, I believe it was.
Dixie.
Dixie County, Mr. Superintendent. And Travis Woods, our director, you know, texted me back and said that they would not have been able to open those schools today had it not been for our staff going over there and working. And I just said, you know, good things happen, and, you know, we might be in that same situation one day. And then the final thing, before our board meeting today, the superintendent and our board administrative assistant and the attorneys and I met on the IT software and hardware process or policy maybe concerning a review of acquisitions of both hardware and software by the IT director or his staff to assure that there's consistency and their compatibility with what's purchased with our whole system so that we don't inadvertently purchase something that could be obsolete or not use it. And so what the attorneys advised was that, that on these types of issues, and it could be anything, that bring it up on our board discussion and see if there's consensus from the board to ask the superintendent to look into a policy that he could bring back that we could, you know, discuss in a board, a board meeting. Is, in fact, that's what you want to do, what we want to do, and the direction we want to go. And I don't see it as something very complicated. I mean, it should be a very simple process, and it's done in all the private sector companies that I'm aware of. So, so I'm just asking, you know, for you, Madam Chairman, to ask the board, do they agree that this is something that we want to look at potentially as either, what you call it?
Policy or procedure?
Policy or procedure. Yeah.
All right. Now, for...
And you can go ahead to your...
No, no. Clarification for me. This was at the last board meeting, no, might have been one before that, where your concern was the purchasing of the IT equipment and making sure that it's not only compatible for us in this district, but to the other emergency agencies in the county?
No, no. Just basically, intra-district.
Okay, okay. All right. All right. Welcome for discussion. What do you feel?
I think that would be very beneficial.
I think it would. I think it would too. I believe most of what we do would probably be predicated on piggybacking off other state district, other district bids, but I'm not certain on that. And I would, I rely, that's why we direct superintendent to bring us the best recommendations, and then we go through it, but I don't, I don't have a problem with...
Yeah, and it wasn't specifically on the bid, but on the compatibility of the system so that we know we're getting good hardware and software that, that will work, you know, and, and, listen, we have a very complicated IT system, and there's a lot of moving parts to it, and, and there's a lot of departments and divisions.
You make a good point because without educational television, county commission couldn't, couldn't go on, and people couldn't see what's happening with them as a government agency. And we want to be communicate, be able to be on the same page with emergency management and county and cities and, if possible, municipalities, but state requirements may be different. But, you know, I'll wait to see what Rick comes back to us.
Madam Chair, could you just clarify what you'd like for us to bring back for review?
Okay. Well, from what I'm hearing, we, as a board, are asking you, as the superintendent, to make sure, bring back a policy that will make sure that the equipment or whatever is purchased by IT is compatible with any place in the district, fill in the blank.
If possible.
If possible. Yes, if possible, but as close to possible as...
Well, and that other departments or divisions or offices may purchase...
That's what I mean, the entire district, the schools and maintenance and...
And that could be a...
Could be a procedure.
Procedure.
As well.
Yes, yes.
We, we actually do have some procedures in place already. I think, or I would recommend the first step be for our IT director to come before the board and give a presentation on exactly what is in place, and then we can kind of go from there. So you're all completely aware of exactly, you know, what we're doing, what our procedures are. And then if it's not exactly what you're looking for, we can go from there.
They can go from there.
Well, it really, really, it all kind of rolls together. I mean, it's just like we talked about with Apogee and the stuff earlier. You want stuff that, you know, be brought, that's, that's going to help us to have better communication and ultimately benefit the kids in the district in the long run and the county in general, so...
If you recall at the last meeting, when Mr. Leonard Harvey spoke to us about the approval that we made for the cameras, and he said, with Crescent City Junior/Senior High, and once that building is new, you will be able to unplug from the old and just plug right in. So he's, so that is a move. He mentioned that.
Compatibility.
Yes.
Madam Chair, if you're okay with it, if the group's okay, I could ask Mr. Harvey to come back and maybe just give a brief presentation at our next meeting.
That'd be great.
And that could be the first step. And I think that's great because I think you need to know where we are now, and then we could go from there.
Thank you. The board, you think that's something, that would give us...
That would give him time as well because we're in hurricane season and we're not out of the woods yet. I mean, this is gonna, this whole thing's going to be fluid for another month or two, so...
Okay. And that would work, most definitely. Mr. Leary?
That's right. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Definitely what we would need.
I'd actually, just FYI, I know when you brought that up before, Mr. Leary, I did, I did suggest talking to Mr. Leary, but I think it'd be helpful to Mr. Harvey, excuse me, to have him come back and address the entire board so that we can go from there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Leary. As always, we do have some great staff that has given us many years of service, not just us, but to our students, and they are retiring. And I'm sure wherever they worked, at whichever school or whichever department, they're going to be greatly missed. And these are not just, you know, two or three years. We have Peggy Harrison with 17 years. We say thank you, Ms. Peggy. Candy Bacon that worked for several years at Brown and Pierce, right up the road from me, I would wave at her, she knew kids getting in and out of cars and would not put them in the wrong car, 34 years. Thank you, Candy. To Mrs. Barbara Curry, 34 years, nine months, a relative by marriage, thank you, Barbara. To Mary Beth Hetstrom, that's been all over the place, all over the district, 35 years and three months, we thank you. We could not have made it or done as good a job as we've done without these employees, those that stick around. All right. Also, just ditto to what Mrs. Pickens said regarding our emergency efforts during Hurricane Adelia, our shelters being open, and I'll just say we're right down to Palacahay Daily News and their coverage of it and what we did. But I did see some buses. Did you transport people with the buses? I saw a few buses in San Mateo.
I saw buses that weren't Putnam County buses.
Checking routes after the hurricane to make sure that they were...
The trees that crawl past.
Look at you all. Okay, yeah. Well, they did. So, so let Miss Spell know, they did exactly what she said because I saw them riding around. And I say, school is not here, what are they doing? But anyway, thank you. And for Palacahay Daily News coverage, coverage of all of our students, be it academic, be it play that Mr. P. has put on, just great. And one of our former employees, she worked with us at Palacahay, Rita Fullerton, she does some of the photography for them, and she sent me a couple of shots of the game that you were at. I saw you walking around shaking hands like you were campaigning, but I ain't saying anything. I was incognito, I ain't saying anything. And finally, you mentioned, Mrs. Pickens, the graduation date. I just think that's awesome. We used to get one here, two or three months later, we'd get another one declaring their date, but we got all of them except Putnam Virtual, I think it was, and we'd be getting theirs, but all four of the school, other schools sent theirs in, and you can just get it done. So you all are doing a heck of a job, and we appreciate it. All right? Mrs. Attorney?
I had mentioned at the last meeting that I would be attending the quarterly Florida School Board Attorneys Association meeting, and it was held this quarter in Fort Myers. And we had a really good presentation from the local school superintendent. Obviously, last year, the Fort Myers area went through Hurricane Ian, and he gave a presentation about the preparedness that they went through before the hurricane came, what it was like during, and then the post-hurricane period, the importance of having contracts in place for afterwards, you could pick up and have people come in at a negotiated rate in advance and clean up and do everything that's necessary to get the schools ready to get back into action again. So that was a really good presentation, a real-life example of, you know, disaster preparedness put into effect, basically. And then they also had a presentation for the five local school board members appeared to talk about how, you know, important it is really for school districts, you know, to work together even when they politically differ, to have a collegial atmosphere and be able to talk with one another. And I really feel that we have that here in Putnam County as well. So that's obviously a very good thing. And the superintendent and the board members talked about the interaction between them and how that works, and I think we also have a good interaction here as well.
Thank you, Carol. Carol, real quick, I'd ask you something earlier, and I thumbed through the law book to 1001001.52, subsection 25, "Other Duties and Responsibilities." Perform such other duties as are assigned by the district school superintendent by law or by the rules of the state of Florida. Now, there is a, I thought I would write on that, but, I mean, not a belabor point, but I don't think you need to get back with us unless you want to.
You can cross that one off your list, to-do list. Okay. All right. Anymore? All right. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, I want to echo what Ms. Pickens said about our shelters. I just want to thank all of our administrators and staff who took time away from their own homes to man our shelters, and we dodged a big bullet, but I just want to thank them all. And I tell you, I just can't be more proud of our smooth operation, the way we, you know, the district partners with all of our local agencies to make sure all of our people are safe. So we take that very serious. But thanks to all who had part of that. Thanks to our four maintenance workers, there's an article in the paper, if you saw that, where they went to Dixie County, and that was brought up earlier. But their superintendent called me today, again, thanking us for helping them. And, you know, they're all part, we're all part of the same family. I mean, we're in effect, and I actually called them and said, if any districts need any help, we stand ready to help. So I can't be more proud of the way our people did that. By the way, we are doing podcasts again, and actually, we interviewed our board chair today, and, and also a couple of our head coaches, just talked about football and how football really contributes to our academic programs. But I do, we are going to be scheduling each of you throughout the year in our podcasts, so just get ready when you get the call, we'll bring you down, and it's recorded, so if you make a mistake, we can, you know, we can edit it out. Always like to message people and tell them, we've got 50,000 listeners.
Yeah, we do.
But anyway, we'll be getting with you. And I do want to, just for clarification, Ms. Leary and the board, I did pull up the job description of Ms. McCool and her job, and I want to make it very clear, just for the integrity of our, the administration, I don't want to make, I want to make sure when we hire people for these positions, they meet the job description, okay? And Ms. McCool, the qualifications for this job, the master's degree, eight years or more successful experience in education, five in administration, certification, certification and leadership, and all that. So I just want to make it clear for the record, Ms. McCool is doing a phenomenal job, and she really is. she really is. And, you know, she has that experience as a building principal and working at the district as well as working in our schools. So it's not necessarily having that background in being a press person or anything, it's somebody who is intimately knowledgeable about the operation of the school, and she's doing a phenomenal job, and spends hours and hours here after the regular day, manning that room's switchboard, is that right, switchboard or help desk or whatever. So I just want to say, I'm very proud of what we're doing as far as our outreach, our community relations, our culture, and I'm telling you, this district would not be where it's at now if we were not connecting with all of our stakeholders. And that's, that's a really important job. And that's something we created because there's a huge need. And I, I think evidence of that is, we passed a $300 million bond issue because our community shows trust in us. And part of that trust is being able to be transparent and reach out to them and make them aware of what's going on, so. And again, talking about the overall travel, I know that was brought up, and I just want to mention, the cost of what we do is an investment. We, I travel a lot, we have a lot of our staff travel, we collaborate with other professionals. This, we cannot operate in a vacuum anymore. It is truly a network in all of our fields. And I've talked to our assistant superintendents, and they literally are connected with so many organizations that really help them with their, their job. And if, if they just had to operate by themselves and we did not co-mingle or, you know, meet with people who do our jobs, we would not be as effective, and there's a price to pay for that. Of course, the cost of travel, you know, gas and rooms and all that kind of stuff is going to increase. So I'm not sorry for that, I know it's a cost, but it's a, it's an investment in our district. And I'll be happy to, to share any information you'd like, but I just want to, for the record, people to understand, and I'll be glad to bring official or additional documentation when we do request, I would say, travel. That's not a problem, we can, we can definitely add that. But I, I just want everybody to know that we, we take this job very serious, and we want people to know that we are, we are, when we do travel, we travel with the idea of making this district better. So, but we will, from now on, we will attach documentation where it will be clear, and if it's not clear, be sure to reach out to us, and we'll be glad to share that. Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Okay, that was one of the things that, that the superintendent did ask. It was almost like you knew that, that we, this scenario would pretty much play out. But one of the questions was, what makes our board unique? And I responded.
Oh, in the podcast.
In the podcast, I responded that we all bring a special gift to, to, to the board, the attorney part of it, where you look into those things, the caring, the grandchildren, and the fact, I was telling you earlier, I said, I talked about you today, I didn't call you by name, but that you are doing what you do. And the fact that we can discuss and, and not vote the same way, but in the end, we end up seeing that it works best for our children when we understand, you know, get wisdom, get knowledge, but out of all you get and get understanding. And that's why we do what we do, we question, we ask, because we want the people out there to know that, that we are concerned about their, their dollars. We are fiscally responsible, and we're not just going to do anything. And so, so we'll continue to do what we do, but guess what? At the end of the day, we're Putnam Strong, and we love all of our employees, and we appreciate what you do, what you do, what you do. We appreciate you. We may not say it enough, but we appreciate what you do and your enthusiasm while you're doing it. That's what makes the difference.
Madam Chair, I'm going to quote Mr. Barker.
Now, now you're going to go ahead, and I thought.
I'm going to one-up you now.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
We met today, and I told you to put this in writing, but you didn't, so I'm going to quote you out, not in writing, but he just said, you know what, Putnam County is known for a very smooth operation. Did I say that right?
That's absolutely right.
And I think that camaraderie we have and the ability to ask questions, I welcome all questions, I really do. And we just, when we met today, we want to make sure that we were following the right path.
Yes.
And as Ms. Leary said, I think, you know, getting that consensus has been very valuable, so.
Well, and look at, and look at the tools, you know, like Sandy said, they all bring, Phil, was it his, his input on agriculture? We've got that proposal, we'll see how that works out. But in the end of the day, we'll, it's all for the betterment of the kids, you know.
Well, we have, and Phil brought it up today, we have, for the first time in years, two non-educators on our board. And to me, I see that as.
A plus.
A plus, because it gives us different perspective, so.
He might as well be an educator there, because his mother was a teacher forever.
Well, he hangs out at Kelly Smith, and might get to put the work out there.
Yep.
Is there anything else to come before the board?
If you have a five.
I know, a five, 505, yes, sir, a budget, all right? But we're going to take a, a break about a 15, well, it looks like 20 minutes, we'll get to kind of chill.
We'll reconvene.
All right?